Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Kishani?
Here.
Mr. Coles?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Present.
Mr. Artusa?
Here.
Mr. Savile?
Here.
And please note, Mr. Malta and Mr. Dardina are out.
Okay, uh, let's see, we do have two items, actually three. The sign is still on, isn't it? There was one sign? Oh, I thought that was on.
Next.
It was taken off? Oh, okay, alright, so there's two items on the agenda, so Dave, what would you like? You start with the first one.
Jiffy Loop located 1161, 1171 Ridge Road and 974 Jackson Road.
That's new.
Board here requesting a site plan modification associated with the construction of a 3,000 square foot Jiffy Loop Auto Care Facility on a proposed 84 acre parcel going 84 acre parcel. Consisting of the above referenced addresses and opening an MC meeting in this commercial district under District Director Tom Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening, for the record, my name is Chris Boyer with Boulder Engineering, and we're here back in front of the board tonight looking for a slight modification, so an amendment to our previous site plan approval. So, the project hasn't changed much, it is a proposed Jiffy Loop, it's still at the corner, it still has the same shape, same size, same orientation. The reason why we're back is because since receiving the approval under town, we did proceed with the rest of our approvals, which include New York State DOT, as we are on a state group. And during that review process, DOT was not too kind to us, and they not only said, "No, we don't like your access," and they said, "No, we don't like a right in, no, we don't like a right out," how about nothing? And so, we ended up removing the access and just having the sole access on Jackson. And so, that's the modification that we'd like the board to consider tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions or comments. Again, same project, same building, same park and count. Green space actually went up a bit because we got rid of the driveway, and it's just an access off of the side street. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions or comments that the board may have.
Well, I was kind of caught by surprise, I'm looking at PRC comments that we got, and I don't know, Josh, you want to?
I just got a copy of it now.
Is there anything out there you can address, or I don't know why this is... Were these items that were not completed, or what?
Yeah, when the project originally came before PRC back in May, there were several comments from various departments that were sent to the engineer and apparently were not addressed in the plans. Mainly relating to the sewer main, the existing shed that's in the easement on the other property to the south, and some issues with the stormwater pond.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't look like much here, it looks like some technical comments are just detail for a stormwater pond and labeling of a pipe, so nothing I see of any concern.
Yeah, there's nothing that would materially change the design of the site, but just some things that need to be shored up on final drawings.
Oh, boy, I don't know, I'm looking at some of these things, I don't... Town believes it to be beneficial to relocate the sewer man. Okay, why wasn't this brought up by whoever made this comment at PRC three months ago?
Well, I wasn't at the meeting last week.
No, I know, no, no, I'm just, I mean, these are the things to me are... Existing shed enclosures on the existing sewers. Were these comments from earlier on, or are the sewers new now, or what?
I think some of these are new, did get reviewed again, but again, I'm not seeing anything that's substantial.
Yeah, I won't.
I mean, it's just kind of cleanup items and...
As far as the road cut, curb cut adds to the road, that's New York State, we have no control over that, we had, we thought we had a good thing going there, but they changed Like your flow of traffic now, it doesn't interfere with anything, you're still okay with all that, right?
Yeah, we would prefer to have that, obviously, but you know, if this is not a large volume business, as we discussed earlier, that's one of the reasons why it's a good fit, the intersection, so we're still alive and we can make it work.
I think that's why the board originally agreed to allow this in that district, actually it was a little odd, so... Alright, anybody have any question, or anything? Dirk, John?
So the ingress and repress, same thing on Jackson Road, did they get any bigger, same size, or anything the same?
That's correct, it's the same.
Just follow up on that, did you get comments back from the county about that?
Well, the county didn't comment on it initially, so certainly the county was involved in the 239M review, but it was left to DOT's New York State Devices, and so...
The hearing report for the stormwater pond needs to be submitted and reviewed. Okay, alright, these are just comments I guess that you're gonna have to address. Alright, we can still move forward, you know, approving the modification to the site, but before any drawings are signed or, you know, finally passed on, something would be method of satisfaction, which is important. We should do a seat around this again, because it's changed, no?
What?
Has it changed?
No question.
Nope?
It's just the drawing board.
Okay, so you have to prove the scope again, but... Alright.
On the drawings, it has a signage table with a allowed and proposed sign, I don't know what they call it, yeah, is that the proposed sign, the one that's freestanding sign?
Again, the signings were reviewed and approved, and so, I think the signage table just reflects what the county...
Okay, right, right, that's what I'm... Okay, as long as everything's been worded right. Alright, do we want to make a motion to this? Just simple modifical site drawing, it's a public hearing. Oh, you're right, yes, sorry, so if there is anyone here, we should speak either for against this and public notice that this was published through the website or website. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Anybody with a motion? Alright, I'll make a motion if we use it. We approve for the modification to the Jiffy Loop proposal. I don't have the address, let's see the address.
1161, 1171.
1161, yep. 11711 Ridge Road.
And 974 Jackson Road.
And it's just a, it's a, does that come in there, it's just a modification to the approval? So again, this is simply a site plan modification.
Can you put a condition on it, project review?
Yeah, 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 no, I was gonna put on that, just... Plans is presented, and then make it subject to previous, there are any additional PRC comments that need to be addressed prior to a signature, final drawings. Is subject to all primary and final, the original, final review.
Okay, Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yeah, try, I'd suggest trying to get this stuff addressed and get this stuff back in so this doesn't keep dragging, you know?
You will.
Sounds good, okay. Thank you.
Salamano subdivision located in South Chicago, North, and Megan Salamano requesting primary final subdivision approval associated with the subdivision of a 13.4 acre parcel into two lots located in an R-3 single-family residential district under District Director
David, Alvaro with Manlaro Associates. This is a two lot subdivision, one lot is three and a half acres that the Salamanos want to build a home on, and Lot Two is the remaining 9.92 acres that is slated to be donated to the town. The current owner, John Naka, Attorney John Naka is here, he can speak to that, so are Megan and Meg, and Meg Salamano. Lot One is, you know, all the utilities are there, sanitary, water. We're gonna need bridge access along across Tugatory 0-99-1. We're proposing to provide a 10-foot wide utility and access easement to Lot Two. The slopes for a single-family driveway off that, off that, that strip land that goes up to Chidwell. We meet all the criteria, there's nothing about that driveway that's unusual, and it'd be a great site. The town lands owns to the north and to the east of this development, so that, that issue of the ownership changing to the town, I guess the conversation was that it would be without access, but it would appear to me that being adjacent to the remaining town lands, it would fit right in. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to John Naka, and he can talk more about what his plans are and why he's, would like to turn this over to the town, and then we'll answer any questions you might have. It's a pretty simple project there, so...
Good evening, everyone, my name is John Naka. I pretty much agree with everything that was just said previously, I think we need to be more specific on the easement. I'm not exactly sure if it's gonna be 10 feet or 20 feet, but it needs to be for ingress, egress, and utility purposes. I do plan on donating it to the town, I donated the same day we need to, we were close, I'm close with the Salamanos. I think it's a practical matter, because it fits in with towns that, or with lands that the town already owns, the utility easement would be of no benefit to the town. And I propose, in addition to what's been said before, that simply as a condition of my deeding the property over to the town, that the town renounces the utility easement and cancel that out. I think that dovetails in with what the Salamanos want to do, basically keep that as a single lot in the balance of the property being transferred over to the town. From a procedural point of view, I don't know how, when I've reached out to your town attorneys, I've never actually donated land to the town before, so I don't know if it's as simple as saying, "Here's the deed," and transferring it to the town, or whether there's something in addition that needs to be done at the town level. But whatever needs to be done, I'm willing to do it, so...
What would be your easement going in, there's the driveway to the house, now that, that would be the easement you're referring to?
Correct, correct, because it's the, the easement going in off of the, off of Chidwell is fairly, is fairly narrow, I guess, I'm not exactly sure how wide it is, the parcel land was about 60 feet or so. One more?
This is a 60-foot wide driveway at one point, and the driveway that's coming off is at the north side of it, just because of rain, and so the easement, we put in a 10-foot access and utility easement, but the town has, has, and we've got documentation that came in, there's three or four different other places where the town had access to this parcel, so maybe, you know, in our mind, very simplistically, we don't know why they would want access over the Salamano's driveway.
Yeah, don't, I don't know what the code calls for, is it a minimum? For a parcel of land, like 60 foot has to be an easement to a parcel of land for future development, who's going to be, so...
Well, this was a stub road at one time, so that's why it was...
So it's probably 60 foot?
It was a 60-foot former right away.
Okay, so what you, what are you saying, if you guys want to make it an easement going into the property at this point, but you're only saying 10 foot, right?
Well, the 60 foot has been conveyed, now it's not a 60-foot right away anymore, it's a 60-foot ownership of which the north 10 feet of it would be the easement for access, town access, to cover that technicality.
Utility, so, well, it hasn't been conveyed yet, that's the proposal, so that 60 feet would actually be conveyed to the Salamanos.
Yeah.
And the town would have...
See, my question is legally, unless I'm wrong here, if you have a parcel of land, access to it for future development, you know, for acreage, I bet it has to be 60 foot, doesn't it?
That's my opinion, too.
I think that's where every college year's going, a parcel, so what I'm trying to say is, if it's an easement now, you know, it has to be a 60-foot easement going into the parcel, I don't think you have 10 foot for just utilities, and let's say we're gonna develop it, let's say you're gonna develop it, and you got, what, you have 10 acres plus the three, let's say you have the 10 acres back there, 10 acres would be exponential homes, you'd have to have a driveway 15 foot each unit, we have to have, so you'd have to have a 60-foot right away going in.
Right, they, they... They now have, that 60 feet that's there now is owned by John, and it's gonna be transferred to the Salamanos, and then what we're doing is, inside that ownership on the north end of it, for that technicality, we're providing a 10-foot easement to the town for access and utilities, and it remains to be seen whether that's an absolute necessity or not, because they have several other areas where they have access to the town lands, which this, if this were dedicated to the town, it would be all...
Well, we understand what the goal, I mean, I know what your goal with this, but to get to that point, I don't know what the legality is for the road, for the, for the access to the parcel, and I don't know if 10 foot meets the requirement, or if it has to be the 60 feet, or...
Anyway, why would the town abandon the toll? What would be needed for the town to do that?
Well, the fact that we're giving you the 10 acres of land, I mean, if you, if, if, if you have land that, that the town owns that already joins this, that I'm giving you, I'm just giving it to you, so you, I mean, obviously...
I get that part, but why would we abandon the toll?
Because, because presumably the Salamanos wouldn't want an easement on that land that they own over, and bought their own utility easements for their houses.
Well, the Salamanos will have the ownership of the 60-foot strip, strip of land that goes up to Chidwell, so incumbent on that would be a 10-foot to the town for utility access, in the same place where they would have a driveway. So they own it now, there's no abandoning it.
There are currently pipes in the ground at that location, correct?
On easements.
Existing easements?
All the pipes and everything that's there now, all the utilities have their own easement, they're covered by an easement at this point, we're not looking to abandon those easements.
As you said, too, I don't, I, I, all years I've been here, I don't recall, you know, running into this, so be warned right now. And I don't have an issue with what you're doing, and I don't know what the legal part of it is.
Our subdivision, excuse me, our subdivision plan shows all the existing easements that cover all the utilities, and you may not have a full-size print, but they're there, we have the abstract, we looked at it, everything's, all the easements, all the utilities are covered, that exists in that 60-foot strip.
So the existing easement is this kind of, like a stick shape?
Yeah.
That's the existing?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, he's going, the only...
And so that existing easement, that contains the water, the sewer?
Yes, yes.
Whatever.
And that, and that easement benefits the entire parcel.
That easement is...
And Chidwell.
Will that easement stay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that easement stays, so what is the temper of this easement to the town?
Oh, because if we just...
I just don't see it on the drawing.
If we just, it's, it's, we have a drawing into the town that does, does have that, there is a, if we create Lot Two, it's a landlocked parcel.
There's no access, so the only benefit would be donated to the town, which I'm willing to do, if we can't do this, then we have a, I have a problem transferring Lot One, because by what I do, I've made 10 acres of land worthless, I can't even get in there, what's, what's the benefit of utilities and it's a land I can't even get into?
I wonder if we're using our own parcels? It sounds like what you actually need to give to this parcel is access.
Yes, that's what we're proposing.
It's just an utility easement, it retains, the access easement needs to be created.
Right, and that's...
Kind of stuff like that, is that breaking out, that access easement overlays the existing 60-foot right-of-way, it's a...
And that's why I said...
And once the, the idea behind that is that once the parcel is transferred, and the other parcel's transferred, fairytale to the town, that would dissolve.
The, the ingress, egress easement.
And the argument of saying, the reason for dissolving it is that now it's parcel that is owned by the town, and it is adjacent to land that is owned by the town, so therefore it has access from the town owner.
Exactly, and none of the other reasons that exist today are going to be abandoned, they're all to remain. So we're just supplementing to cover the, the technicality of the, of the landlocked parcel with a 10-foot wide utility and access easement.
Right. Would that remain this?
If the town, if it, if it turned out that the town was amenable to this, no, it could be, that could be just abandoned, that easement, because the town has access in other points, three or four, actually.
Okay, then why would the town want to abandon?
What benefit is it to the town to do all the extra? What do we get on? That's why we're, that's why we're here, nine and a half, 9.9 acres?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think that the town would be happy to add another nine or 10 acres onto their, onto the public lands, that are owned by the town. You're not gonna need it to get into my parcel, you have access at other points to get to this additional easement.
Okay, so where does the benefit come, I mean, we're all good people, and we donate stuff, and we all look for something, so where do you want to get at this?
Me? I don't need anything from the town, I mean, I'm, I need, I need the access so that, so that I can get an appraisal, because I'm just gonna write it off on my cash account.
Okay, go, so...
Last time I, I mentioned that, the town said they didn't care, which is fine, I do,
Okay, anybody, you guys getting comments on this?
This sounds like a legal review, so, I don't know, what?
Yeah, that's right, I don't, and I don't know what the legality is of the entrance of that 60-foot, if you...
How do you have to use it?
To me, but yeah, I support you, this is a land that's being dedicated to the town, I support the town. Yeah?
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, that's what we're asking determination.
Yeah. And we don't, we don't, the town wants the land.
So the water, and there's water, there's water access, any kind of access.
Well, we can't do that.
Alright, let's do this, we're, we're going in a circle, why don't we, why don't we table this, and request a table, and get together with the town board, see if they're interested in, in taking the parcel first of all, and how they want to pursue the easement, we think?
Because we don't have authority to, we don't have authority to accept the dedication.
The town doesn't want the land.
The town has its, the town's authority on it.
Yeah, didn't we very well, what, we, we don't have this, we don't have any...
I think what we're looking for tonight is, is for the, the planning board to either recommend that this is a good idea, or no, it's not a good idea, to the town board, because they have ownership of it, so...
Well, let's kind of, let's kind of put the cart before the horse, because we, personally, I'm okay with what he's talking about doing, but I don't know what the legalities of it all are, and Derek has brought a good point, that it really is something that, to take dedication, we have to be the town board, so I think we should have them, have consult, them before we do anything. I mean, we can't send a letter saying, "Well, we're all okay with it," because we don't know whatever, all the modifications...
Yeah, I think he wanted us to run it by you guys first, I think that's, to get flavor for, you know, so whether you guys are...
Does this, or the town board have approached this?
I don't know.
Have you approached Charlie Janeski?
Have I? I have, I emailed Charlie Janeski, and I've spoken with the supervisor, whose suggestion it was, he left me a message stating that we're gonna put it before the planning board, I mean, they were, they were all for it, they just said this had to go through the planning board, which is why we're here.
Because town code, section 19226, says that after determination has been made that an easement or easements will be required, either for the purpose of ingress to or egress from the subdivision, or as incumbent of any of the Brooklyn districts, to inform therein the subdivision or property owner is different than the subdivision, so shall submit to the town attorney for the planning board, propose the event in a language description of property that is set easement. And we have done that. You submitted the easement? Easement and description. To Charlie? Not to Charlie, no. Okay, you submitted it to DBW? Yes? No. Who did you submit it to then? I think it went to Josh, I believe.
I don't believe that our office has seen it.
I didn't see it.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do this for starters? Again, this is about the caring, so assuming we folks are neighbors, okay, so why don't we do this? Let's open it to neighbors. If you wish to comment at it, just keep it short. All I'd ask is, if you'd love, give us your name and address and explain your situation, so let's go for it.
You want me to just talk to the neighbors?
No, 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 go to the mic, give us your name and address.
Fourteen ninety-eight Chigwells, which would be here, the excess road we're talking about, and-
What's your name?
Rick Taddeal, fourteen ninety-eight Chigwell Lane. I would like them to talk a little bit about the creek, because that is a Class Five Steelhead Trout Creek that has strict regulations. And at least the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers are quite interested in what might be the impact of all the development that's got to go on that steep hill, you know, and what that could possibly do.
We've been in contact with them.
No, but I would like to hear what they've told you. It isn't just that the bridge has to be strong enough to bear all the heavy equipment, and that they have to have the easement, but there cannot be any short-term or long-term erosion on that creek. It runs into Four Mile Creek, which as you know, is part of the trail system in Webster, and then goes right into Lake Ontario. So, more power to you if you can do it, but no damage to the creek, because they're just not going to let you do that.
We understand that.
All right, don't talk to the audience, go ahead and finish it if you want, if you want to work with us.
But basically, that's it, I mean, I think that's certainly our, my wife and I and several other neighbors, that is our biggest concern. And having been involved with the trail group for seven years, I know how much work they put into developing that Four Mile Creek Preserve, that many of the citizens and many Webster citizens, but other people use it. Hundreds of people fish there, mostly by the way here, but this creek, salt creek, runs right into Four Mile Creek, and it's very important. That's really the biggest concern.
Thank you, Mr. Taddeal.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Chetito, fourteen ninety-eight Chigwell Lane, and I want to say to Megan that we would look forward to welcoming her to the Chigwell Lane neighborhood. It's growing with young families, and it would be wonderful to have her join the community. However, as Rick was pointing out to you, this is, and requires some sensitivity in the way that the creek is dealt with, it's a sensitive area. We moved here fifteen years ago, and since then, there have been three, four, maybe five other developers who have looked at the site and realizing not just the expense, but also the difficulty of the regulations by the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineer, and Monroe Army, and a few other levels, they have abandoned their plans. The, so, we welcome Megan to the neighborhood, but we just would like to see that all of the supervision that's required to have a safe, as well as a beautiful development, be watched over by the town of Webster. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I think along those lines, I think the DEC would be heavily involved, that was one of the comments that came up earlier. Is there anyone else?
Go ahead, anyone? No, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sue Herman, I live at fifteen oh six Chigwell, which is just on the edge of this proposed three-and-a-half acre lot. As previous speakers have mentioned, this is all a sensitive area because of the creek. Our back lot line from our home to the creek is like a wetland area. And just to the south of our property, the creek comes through Ryer Field Way, it comes underneath the roadway there, and it comes around and it makes a sharp turn right at our property, and then proceeds along to the north end, which is where this three-and-a-half acre house lot is proposed. My concern is flooding. It's well-known that this is a flood plain area, and we get substantial flooding right now, because the water coming from the south rushes up so much, misses the curve, and floods out the whole backyard behind our home, which is perfectly acceptable, because that's the way it was designed. But I have some pictures that I took of the last storm, the last big storm we had, and the large amount of water that collects there now. And it's, it's a huge amount of water, and it's really moving quite rapidly. My concern is that the home that's going to be built, I don't know what the elevation, how much they have to build up the property, how this is going to impact that flow that's now coming across by our backyard and into the other neighbors' backyards. So, I've got a couple of pictures if you want to look at. So, where the water line starts, that is basically the end of our lot, so it's the, that's the flooding area that happens with the storm. Well, yeah. You can see that with the boat, actually, this part back there, the water is actually halfway up the boat meals, and so you can see how deep that is. Now, this picture here, this is where I was saying the creek makes a turn and then goes back behind those trees, and so because it turns there, it misses that turn, and it comes directly across, across this way here, and then it proceeds down to fifteen oh four, you know, in the young, and so, you know, it's just a little bit of a concern, it's like, how much worse is this going to get if there's impact on the land as far as, you know?
Yeah, I'm wondering just if, you know, not to get off of everything else here, but is there maybe some blockage in the creek in a certain area there?
Well, yes, yes, exactly what I'm trying to-
Trees or ground?
Some of the neighbors, some of the neighbors have contacted the DEC, and they're saying, you can't touch it, you can't do anything about clearing out blockages. My husband goes back and clears out things like that, when we, you know, we started to see, you know, garbage and things like that, and starts removing any treatments or brush or anything the animals might do, some of the neighbors have told me can't do anything about it, so that's just a little bit of a concern.
Looks like there's a lot of little bridges over there.
I wouldn't be able to move it if I tried.
Well, see, that's, that's one of the problems, like she was just saying, you get blockage in these creeks, and this is happening in other areas in town where people have a stream going through and they build a bridge, and it's not done to any standards. Alls you need is a couple pieces of brush to start piling up in front of it, and all of a sudden, your creek is overflowing and-
Well, just where the proposed lot is, though, it's like, what kind of an impact is that lot, and what's the elevation, how much are they going to have to bring in from the house?
Well, I'm sure they gave the house, that would have to be something they would regulate, you know, as far as the elevation.
Right.
Yes, anyone else? Yes, sir? Oop, I didn't see you back from home or something.
I'll try to be real quick, my name is Dave Boat, I live on Fallon Leaf Terrace, fifteen twelve Fallon Leaf. We've been there right since the beginning, we built the house there in ninety-eight. We had a house, it was empty lot on the other side, but we bought that place for the land. And the creek is very important, it's a watershed, but that land is a lot more important than that. You hadn't talked about the old, the forest, there's old growth forests in there, those trees are two hundred, three hundred years old, once you cut them down, they're gone, you can't replace that. That land there is really, it's a nature preserve, it's a wildlife refuge. I mean, everybody, I'm sure knows you've heard of deer in there, you've seen the fox. You know, last year I saw turkey in there, everybody see a couple turkeys on the side of the road, I saw a flock of turkeys in there, a cow, there was twenty turkeys, I don't know anything about turkeys, but that's phenomenal. It's a wildlife refugee, wetlands, old growth forests. Mr. Allen talks about donating some land to the town, I think that's phenomenal, I think that's great, we should jump on that, if you can get some land and protect it. Whatever you do with this development, please try to keep it as small as possible and protect that land back there.
Well, that's why he's got this law.
I understand, I understand, and we're all trying to work together here, but I think we need to try to protect that land, it's very special back there. And they're building a, you didn't talk about an easement, you didn't talk about building a bridge, I mean, that's a, that's a big undertaking. And I would just try to keep this development as small as possible and protect that land back there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, that's okay, I agree. My, I'm Megan, this is my husband Matt, so we're the, we're suppliers, I know, recognize familiar cases. Oh, I'm sorry, from being over in the development meeting some of you. We, you know, understand and respect all of your concerns that you're bringing here tonight, and that's kind of why this project is taking, you know, the time that it's taking, because we're working very closely, not only with our engineer, but also with DEC in regards to the creek. As far as the creek goes, we are following all the DEC recommendations as to what the bridge would need to entail for our driveway to cross the creek without causing erosion or disruption to the creek and the water that is in there when it is wet. We have been monitoring with pictures as well after the storms, when we actually have pictures.
Megan, excuse me, just move up a little bit closer to the microphone.
Is this button? I'm sorry. We've been monitoring per the DEC recommendation, we've also been monitoring the creek with pictures after heavy rainfall, and we actually have multiple pictures over days after rainfall where the creek is actually dry, specifically at the point that we would be crossing. But again, we're following and working closely with the DEC regarding their protocols and their guidelines, what would entail us to cross with our driveway. And then, I know it was mentioned about like the land and it being wildlife, which we, you know, we also respect, and that's why we're working very closely with the seller, John Nakka, to only disrupt, you know, as little land as possible, with the hopes that he would be able to donate the majority of it to the town to keep as is nature and wildlife without disruption.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. I ask a question, I guess. You folks have been here this evening, you've heard everyone discussing this. The gentleman's owned the property for several years. He has paid taxes on this for several years, and he's at the point now where he's saying only a certain amount of it is developable. So, let me ask you guys a question. If he were to say, forget it, I'm not going to donate the land, a lot of it is wetland, but I can find two more flat spots in there to build three houses back there, what would you rather have?
Actually, back in the nineties-
Wait a minute. I, I know, but hold on. What would you prefer to have, what's proposed, or three or four houses? Or there could be more, yeah. Anybody have any suggestions?
Yeah, as proposed would be.
I'm sorry?
As proposed versus toward three, or up to six, yes.
We're debating what goes first here, the cart or the horse, but we can send a letter to the town board, would you folks be in favor of us sending a letter? I've never done this in all my years here, it's the first time this has ever happened like that, first, the first time I've been in this dilemma, I think. Would you be in agreement, this board, sending a letter to the town board recommending they proceed forward with purchasing or accepting this parcel of land with just the one house on it, and working regarding the easements and stuff that they're proposing to work with?
You know, I'm really, I'm not knowledgeable enough about developments to answer that question. No, but I want to say this, we moved there in two thousand six.
All right, we're not picking you up, if you want to talk, you can go back up there, but the mic's got a, come over here.
The developer for this Chigwell Lane area, Woodford Green, is Tom Marchello, and he's built several tracts, and he lived there when we moved there. And I have talked to him, I've also talked to the zoning, person who was in charge of zoning at that time, two thousand seven, this was the year. And, and we have correspondence too, because he wrote to my daughter about this whole issue. He couldn't build there when he was building all these other houses, knowing the difficulties it was going to take, not just the hoops about the creek and everything, but he was saying the cost, and this was in two thousand six, he said the cost to get a proper bridge and culvert was, it was huge, and that was in two thousand six. And I just want, I mean, if they can do it, that's great, but I want them to be aware, because they're going to be spending a lot of money. Is this worth it for the one property or even two, with all the hoops that they had to go?
Stop, stop, that's not our call, that's their call. That's how the, that's how the system works. Kids say, we don't want you to do this because the cost is prohibitive, no, that's their call. If they're going to do it, they do it by the book, they're going to do what's going to be required by DEC, the town, the county, so on and so forth, and that's all we have to look at.
No, you know, I shouldn't, what I was simply trying to reiterate was the concerns that Marchello had in two thousand seven.
Yeah, we're aware of all that, though. But there are, there are people, somebody might want to come in there with a couple million dollars, want to put a house right in the middle of that thirteen acres of land.
Sure.
Building a bridge, I'll guarantee you, you'll figure a way of doing it, but my point of the whole thing is, would you rather just have the one house in there that we know is on the proposal right now, or the possibility of him saying, well, the town doesn't want the property, I'm going to build three houses? I think I got your answer, but the one house is probably more acceptable.
Better because of all the lot, first of all, we, we all did visits from the various wildlife that's there, and that's part and charm of living there, so I would say one house would be better.
I actually think the question is beside the point. The point that everybody here is making is that the proper procedures have to be followed to the proper agencies, and I, my question is, how will that be monitored?
See, we understand that part, but that's secondary to the primary. Primary thing is, is the town willing to take this land to even begin the process? Once the process begins, that's when they step in and have to have everybody involved, DEC and so forth.
So, should your letter to the town be, are you willing to accept this donation?
That's, that's my question, that's what I was asking.
Well, it sounded like-
This is a question I was just asking, what kind of-
Okay, so, so your question was, do we think it's a good idea for you to write to the town and see if they will accept the donation of this land? Yes.
Okay, that's the gentleman's-
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but yes.
I think we're all in the same vein, so let's, let's have that direction, so you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll send a letter to the town, this is where we were undecided, I mean, I was anyways. We'll draft a letter to the town board stating that after reviewing the process of the application and comments from the neighbors, it was very acceptable that the town, it would be very acceptable for the town to take dedication of this parcel of land to work with the applicants in regard to, in regard to the easement, okay? That okay, right?
The problem, yes, but the problem is, he's saying that he's submitted an easement to Josh, and Josh's saying he doesn't have an easement, I've never seen this proposed easement, so I don't know where the easement is, but I don't have it.
We'll check it tomorrow.
Okay, but wait, hold on, you're going too fast. How can we approve something when I haven't even seen the easement yet?
No, we're not going to approve it, we're just sending a letter to the town board, we're giving it, done the application, reviewing it.
Okay, okay.
I'm getting scared of it.
I'm just saying, I don't want you to approve something I haven't even seen it, that we're approving something, it's like, that's like buying a jumbo, you have to get eaten.
No, we're not going to, yes, sir. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bob Shaw. I live in fourteen million Fortune Well. My, it's more a question, I guess, is if this were ultimately approved and donated that land to the town, and I understand correctly, that there would only be one house there? Or is there any chance that it could turn into two?
No.
And three?
No.
And four?
No, that's exactly the point.
You're looking at me. My involvement, once I sell the lot to the buyers and I donate the land to the town, I'm out. So it should be one lot with one house. That's why I thought...
We really don't even hear you, but I'm like... I'm sorry. But anyway, the answer to your question is, once the town has it, it becomes parkland. And that parkland is there for...
It would be up to the town board to decide what they want to do with the land.
And actually, that takes an act of progress. Even if the town wanted to sell it, that'd get off the subject, but there's pieces of land in the years past where the town wanted to sell a piece. They have to go to the state and everything else to even mire a little piece. So it doesn't happen.
We had submitted to the D E C and all that, and bridge details and all that's come to the D E C. We're waiting for them to respond.
Yeah.
So it's a process. It started, but this is the first step.
Okay, is the board's in agreement with doing that?
Yeah, yeah. I heard two comments tonight. I know that I click follow up on your part. I heard two comments tonight. I click follow up on your part. Looking at the plans, the graded plans, sheet three, I see some cut and I see some fill, fill level up, grow up to the house. One thing is not clear on the plan is the actual extent of the amount of disturbance of the trees will be taken up.
We know what that is.
Some kind of guideline showing that how we...
We're disturbing eight thousand four hundred eighteen square feet. Then includes the, the lawn on the west side of the creek.
So you're less than acre?
All less than an acre. And certainly not less than an acre of the wooded area. Because again, I'm a graduate forester. I like trees.
And the other comment, I mean, I heard a statement made about needing to make flood plain. And I don't see any indication on here what a flood, what a flood option may need on this site.
Yeah, the site, the plan does indicate, the plan does indicate that it's not within a designated flood plain.
This is a flood zone, actually.
I pay my flood plain? No, it's not on a flood plain map. It's an designated flood plain. I think we'll find that on sheet three, that note. Yeah, the house that we're proposing is fifteen feet above the creek, bank of the creek. So I think we're high enough.
So the house itself is essentially for all intents and purposes, the stream around it, what is an island?
It's an island, yeah.
And you just need, there is cut, you see on the entrance driveway and also cut the creek driveway to walk the house by presumably reasonable grade or actual ground.
Right.
The lower, the lowest area of the driveway. So even though this thing is not in the flood plain, some D E C court of reference will solve it for what's necessary for a clear order.
Oh, yeah. No question.
We all like to count.
We will.
Looking at the sheet three, I see a better understanding of why you shaped the lot that we kind of followed the contours and...
Exactly.
All right. Okay, then that's what we'll do at this point. We'll address a letter to the town board. You guys okay with that?
Question on you?
One more question.
I was asking too, though, is have you done, done a formal wetland renovation for this area?
We have. I've looked at it to say, no, there isn't any in that area except for that little small band right where the creek is.
Sure. With the way the streams are...
I know what the species are.
Looking at the streams and so forth, it really seems that that should be... This kind of lineup, the needed for court of reference, D E C, whatever, for the justice.
And we're waiting for them to respond to the text.
Just demonstrating that the wetlands and the trees and all the impact on that. To prove the area of disturbance is not sufficient. State of the law. And I forget if the house can be...
Exactly.
Okay, we'll send, yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry. Move over there. Yes, ma'am.
Can we request that in your letter to the town... In your letter to the town recommending that we accept the donation from Mr. Nakka, would you ask that they accept it as a park district instead of as open space? Is that possible? The difference being between the two being that if it's accepted as a park district, it will remain as a district. If it's accepted as open space, then the town can sell it at a later date?
No, they can't sell it.
Okay, that's not my information, but...
No, once we can...
My understanding is that that town board received a parcel of open space that's informed a park district. So then they would reach out to the residents in that district because they may be seeing the cost associated with the park district? I've never seen it, I don't presume you know everything about the town board, but I've never seen it where it's just dedicated as a park district.
My belief is they would keep it contiguous with what the rest of the world has. A large piece there that connects to, they'll keep it the same as that, I'm sure.
I just don't want to come back here in ten years and ask you to do this all over again.
No, I don't think, I don't think I would want that.
Thank you.
Are you going to give one of your...
No, no, we're not going to give any approval. Alls we're going to do is, I'm just going to, for the recognition we got, I'll make a motion that we, that the board has agreed to send a letter to the town board for their review of recommendation.
Mr. Cisani?
Aye.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Aye.
That's done. Now, again, this was a public hearing. Should we close the public?
No, no, no. We should leave it open.
We should leave it open.
Yeah, leave it open. And my only other suggestion would be twofold. One, it turned this to a specific date, and you need to submit your easement so that we can review it. So when we come back, whatever date you can select, we can move along.
Well, they'll have to get it set up at the town board first. Hang on a second. It's going to be hard.
Well, just pick a standard date. Be prepared, town board, whatever you want to do. These, we need to agree to a specific case. He's not hanging, they're not hanging. Everybody knows what's going on.
I'll do that. Okay, so what, Josh, you got a thing on?
No. I don't think we can bring it back to the next meeting.
No, no, the town board, they've got to set their...
With the planning board vote, I'm just trying to think of the distance of the dedication aspect of it. The planning board actually needs to be submitted first.
Correct.
And the dedication...
Correct. In the past, in the past, when this plat was submitted and submitted, the land to be heated over would be submitted as a separate thing. And I don't know, I would just go in and he would have a look at the deed description to make sure everything's copacetic. And then, I don't know what happens after that because I'm just a woman on the phone to hire people to approve. Because we don't have authority as a board to accept dedication. We can recommend goods, but that's it. We're legislative adjunct of the town board, whatever power we have, completing whatever they've given to us, town of these towns. We don't make...
We would see this in like for preliminary filing. You could give it a, you know, ultimate preliminary filing. But then it'd be subject to, and then passed down to the actual transmission of the property to the town board.
And I can't see why the town board would not want it, nine, one, nine acres? I can't tell them in your view.
No, I don't think so.
But then again, I don't know everything about the town board. I don't know...
We just can't make the call.
We can't make the call. But at least submit it, and then I can run it up to Charlie and we can talk about it. And then he can talk to whoever has P S to talk to to filter it back down to me before the next meeting. So since you're going to a specific date, everybody knows.
Yeah, that's Josh was checking.
Yeah, so is a public hearing required when the town board goes to decide on accepting dedication or not? Because then that would have some additional time to...
Just assume, assume you have...
Your book.
I guess that it was yes also because that would be the same thing as the town. They had to set a meeting up for the acceptance of it, giving it special use to a tankhouse to have.
More ability for citizens to comment would be older. No one's going to find fault if we give them more opportunity.
Well, the first meeting in October will be the fifth. And that's still might be pretty tight for the number of meetings the town board...
Why not go to the nineteenth?
Does it control tonight? Well, Jeff, I'll be out of the country. I don't know if my cousins is required or...
No, they're not really.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to go with ten acres.
Just give it away. That's all.
Where do we send the thank you notes to? All right, there you go.
I feel that some of the long-term building, spring?
I'm sorry?
You have building for spring?
We'd like to break ground before snowfall. So we're really here to get approval for the building lot.
I think, yeah, the donation is tied between the town and Mr. Nakka.
Fine.
Well, yes and no. I mean, I'm not going to sell the lot if I'm not going to be able to donate the land because shot myselfself in the foot. Now I've got ten acres of land that I don't have access to and stuff.
Yeah, I have a total mix total set. The only dilemma for us is there's a process. We have to do it. We'd like to say, yeah, you can be able to start in October, but you don't know how it all goes. Just step aside and do what's best we can.
I would be able to accommodate it now. It's a bold thing. Just a little project. Take it on board down the road.
So we'll set the nineteen, the nineteen...
That's what I would say.
Okay, so motion to have the applicant return in October, the nineteenth. That can afford process for...
Mr. Cisani?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. See you guys soon. All right, I think that's it. That's it. Thanks for coming on. We'll break you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I know. So we have a search committee. So there's five of the votes that are on it. We have a regular meeting tomorrow night. We are meeting before that to confirm our job description. And then hopefully it'll be posted by the end of the week. We're waiting for the civil service department exam to come out. We're going to go home mid-ten September. So we've started, but we haven't found any actual candidates yet.
Do you have, you have some very specific...
I'm sorry?
Yeah, very specific.
Yeah. Certainly if you have any specific feedback or anything, you can give it to me and Mary Ellen. Okay. So she, right now is saying that she's willing to stay through the hiring and the transition. She's going to be direct. So we'll see how long it will go. We'll be also depending on how long the process takes. But right now she's willing to...
Well, given the suspension of the will, we, we, we're not going to, we're... It's problematic for the people traveling.